Mr. Staff, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
The agenda item is the update on dogs on leash program. Joseph Arcina, Director Department Superintendent.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. As promised, I'd be back to talk about the dogs on leash program. I think, for the most part, this will be a very positive discussion. We basically had very few incidents in the park since we started the program many months ago. That's the good news. But we're basically only dealing with 50 participants in the program. And those 50 have done everything they can to be good neighbors, good citizens, and have asked their pets to join along with their behavior. So we think we need to take the next step, as I told you we probably would do. And we're proposing the following: that the dog on leash program will have fall/winter hours in Matheson Park, October 24, 2016 through March 31, 2017. It would be open daily. So whenever the park is open, people in the program would be able to bring their dogs in the park. We're simply asking them to avoid the playground and underneath the picnic area, unless otherwise noted, because there might be days we have programs or schools in there that we wouldn't want the dogs in there. Owners must be registered in the program with the Irvington Wreck-It Parks Department, and dogs must wear a tag provided by the Wreck-It Parks Department. When they register, or the people who are already registered, they will be given two green tags that basically say "Matheson Park, Program Participant." One goes on the dog collar, and one the owner can put on their keychain, so that there's always a way to prove that they belong in the park. It's $25 per dog, and the park is open only to the registered and licensed dogs. Fines from $50 to $250 for violators, which is the same sign we've put in the woods, trying to get people to follow the rules, and so far that's really had a positive impact also. There may be days where the dogs are not allowed in the park based on programs and special events. The program will be evaluated after March to determine what the hours for the spring and summer of 2017 will be. If things go well, we will simply just carry this forward, and it will be the regular everyday rules for use of the park by people in the program.
Did I miss you saying the really important thing, that it's every day 7:15 to closing?
Correct. We said if there was no reason not to go forward, and the participants worked with us, that we would do that. I met with Steve Schneider and Alan Richardson a few weeks ago to let them know what I was thinking. The only thing I asked them is, originally I told you I'd probably be ready to try it early October, but with Rocktoberfest next weekend and the hayride the following Saturday, we really do have a lot to do to prepare. It just makes more sense to let us get through those things, let us let people know it's coming so they can start registering, because there are a lot of people, we're hoping that, now that the hours are pretty much, whenever the park is open, that we're going to see our numbers climb at least by double what they are right now. So I think it's worked well. I know it's been slow. I know it can be frustrating, but I think we've taken the right steps. I think we've done it the best way, and, you know, the people using the park, I have not had one complaint. The only incidents we've had in the park were with non-residents with dogs.
So, Joe, you sort of answered the question. What do you think the Penta need, desire, want, or whatever, is going to be now that you would be during all park hours? You know, you said you had 50 with the steady state for up until now.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I think there's a lot of people who want to take that walk at night when they get home from work.
Sure, yeah.
So I think there's going to be a lot of people who'll take advantage of that.
You mean, you think it's like double, triple?
I'm hoping at least double, you know? I mean, you know, the guys aren't sure. They're trying to make sure that their followers understand what's going on. And, listen, they've been great. Whenever there's been a time I've needed to bounce something off of them, they're very reasonable guys. They understand, they know what we're up against. But, you know, the most important thing of the dogs using the park is that the number two situation that could be left there has not happened. People have been respectful. They deserve this next shot, as we promised we would offer.
So do you see any deer, deer, any geese?
Please don't say that word.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's rubbish. Short spot right now. Do you see any potential impact on geese in the park? I mean, I know that, you know, when they were there only for certain hours, it wouldn't have been...
I don't know. I'm hoping the new lights we've put in, if you go down to Sinek Hudson Park right now, and you look near the basketball court or on the two infield, you'll see a blinking orange light, which is from a, it's a new product, which was actually recommended to us by once-mayor Reg Mauer. He tried it on one of his properties where he had a lake. In the beginning, he said, oh, here we go again, another stupid thing, and then he realized it really was working. Since we've put those lights in Sinek Hudson, we've only had one bad night of the geese. Since we've put them on the infield, we have not had a bad night with the geese. Now, the impact of the lights are they'll keep the geese away at night from nesting, from sleeping, and from feeding. It doesn't help you during the day, though, so we're still looking. If you go into Sinek Hudson right now, you'll see these orange and white poles in the ground with a piece of tape on them that's called Mylar Tape. The reflection of the sun hits their eyes, and they don't like that, and it discourages them. So this is a daily battle, and we're trying as many different things as we can. But if we can keep them out of there at night, the amount of time my guys have to waste cleaning things should be cut way down, so. The good thing, excuse me, about these lights is you have 100 days, and if you're not satisfied, you get a full refund, which is why it was a no-brainer to try it.
All your geese get cooked, I know. So I did not see them, so could you describe, do they stick up from the ground?
There's two types. There's one that's called the rooftop one that kind of looks like, almost, you know those weights that have the round handles on them? You pick them up, they look like some kind of a canteen. Well, we have, that's one style that you fill with sand. It weighs about 40 pounds when it's filled, so we can move it where we want. The other ones are almost like flashlights on a long stick that have a little auger that you can twist them into the ground and put them there. And then the third way they can be installed, the straight ones, are they can be put out to pieces of wood. So we might try to put one or two on the wood fence of the basketball court.
So, just, I'm just trying to, this is just interest sake. Are they on timers, or do you have to manually?
They're powered by the sun.
Oh, really?
They get their power during the day. They're solar-powered, so no electricity, no batteries. They run themselves, so.
Oh, no, you're going to try some at Matheson, or?
Yes, we are. We actually, in Matheson, we can't get them to screw into the ground because it's all rock.
So it's all weights?
So what we're doing at Matheson is we're actually taking white buckets, filling them with cement, and we're going to put it in there, because then it becomes movable, and there are times we may want to move them. If it works, we'll probably try to make the buckets a little prettier, but...
Yeah, contest paint the bucket.
Maybe.
Paint the goose bucket.
So, so far, we've seen some success with it, though.
So, one final question.
We'll go back to your original question. The dogs in the park all the time certainly can hurt, but what will likely happen is if they are impacting the geese there during the day, Sinek will carry the brunt of it.
So the other question, and just, so we're all ready. Are people, is there any reason to complain about these lights at night? I mean, are they obnoxious or?
They've been up for two weeks, we haven't heard a word. I mean, Larry's line today is the Queen Mary might try to duck against them. They're very, the answer is I doubt you'd even know what was there if you went down there, so.
Yeah, I didn't even think geese didn't have eyelids.
Yes, you, I guess.
I learned that from you, Joe.
That's true. And the other one is that geese don't duck.
Yes.
Ducks duck. Which is why the fence around the basketball court?
Correct.
Okay, that's important. I don't think people realize that. That part of the reason for that fence.
No, no, no. The only reason for the fence was to try to protect our investment.
Right.
And save time. Now, it hasn't been perfect, but they're, they've not landed there at all, except for one day. And the day they were there was early in the morning. So again, the lights, we think, are keeping them away at night. We have to find a few other things to do to protect the court. The damage to the court, I mean, you know, you guys three years ago funded us to redo that court. We have to do it again this year, you know, because of the damage that it does, so. That's the reason the fence is there.
Geese don't duck.
Geese don't duck, yes.
So I have just, I think I know the answer, but back to the dog program.
Yes.
So, which is, unless, daily till closing, what does closing mean generally?
The reason, guys, if it was the summer, it would say 10 o'clock. But in the winter, or in bad weather, because the police lock it up, during, they have the option of going in there at 6 o'clock on a bad night or in a, you know, storm and locking it up. Usually, the park will stay open till 9 or 10 every single night. Weather's bad, questionable weather, a reason, something's happened, that's why we didn't want to put a time there. However, if this goes forward into the spring and summer, it will say 7 till 10, because that's what we normally allow.
So when people start, well, they'll come and they'll sign up with you, and you'll talk to them, but would they know, I mean, if they're coming down at 7, you know, like if they're home from work and they're in there?
The only reason it would be closed early, Connie, is the weather was really bad.
So it would be, yeah, just watch out for bad weather, and there's no way of them knowing?
You've been down in the river when the weather's bad. You don't want to bring your dog down there anyway.
I know that part. I know that river. But, so it could be till 10?
Yep.
Okay. I think people will be very happy.
So with your blessing, this would be released tomorrow to the public?
Excellent. I'm good with it?
All right.
Sounds good, Mike.
Thank you.
Next announcements, we have quite a few. Even on this Duke. First, public hearing on Wednesday, October 19, 2016, at 7:00 PM in Village Hall. Consider a local law amending Chapter 9, Board of Architecture Review of the Village of Irvington with respect to attached one-family dwellings. I guess I'll ask for a motion to have a public hearing. You can have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Did you want to give a 10-second overview of what that is?
I can't do it in 10 seconds, but I can tell you what it's about.
Okay, I'll give you three minutes.
Somewhere in between.
Just by way of fact, this past December, the board amended the zoning code to permit as a new use in the multifamily district attached to one family houses. And they made other, and the amendment included other changes to set back in coverage to accommodate that use. As you know, the planning board's been considering a site plan application for such a use on 30, 40 South Broadway. In fact, at the September meeting, the planning board issued a negative declaration on the project, so it's moving on efficiently. Now, the developer, of course, the developer appeared before the ARB for preliminary comments on the project's design, and the ARB brought up Section 9.2 of their law, which provides, it's shorter, I'll read it, "Houses adjacent to each other in any direction shall not look alike. Minimum variety and appearance shall be achieved by certain factors." This provision was clearly intended for single-family houses in, you know, developments like Legend, Howell, or... That requirement doesn't seem to make sense for townhouses. And it hasn't, in fact, been applied to other such developments like Richmond Hill or Field Point. So it was suggested that the Board of Trustees consider amending the provision to exclude attached one-family houses from that requirement, and that's what this amendment would do. So before proposing the amendment, we already wrote to the ARB to ask for its opinion on accepting single-family townhouses from that provision, or single, attached single-family houses. The ARB's response was they did not think the provision about similarity, dissimilarity should apply to attached one-family houses, and that's what this amendment does. It merely adds the phrase "except for attached one-family dwellings" at the beginning of the provision, instead of the houses can't look alike.
All right. I think you came in under a lot of time.
I don't know. How long is that?
About two and a half. You have 30 seconds or so later. The next is the Sixth Annual Harvest Dinner. Read the, let me read the full one. The Irvington Farmers Market Sixth Annual Harvest Dinner is scheduled for Sunday, October 16, from 6 to 9:00 PM. I believe there are tickets still available, but it does always sell out, so if you're interested, you can go to their Facebook page, I believe, and find tickets there, but it does sell out every year. What won't sell out, because it's impossible, because the park gets completely filled, is Rocktoberfest, which is scheduled for Saturday, October 15, at Matheson Park from 3 to 9:00 PM. It is a free event. It is a face fundraiser, so we will, of course, ask for donations. I think we have a pretty good lineup of bands. We have three great local bands, The Binding Rod, Juke Joint, and The Stories. People probably know a lot of the members of those bands personally. Then we have a unique band called The Racer, which is kind of like an alternative rock band. They're kind of like a New York version of Coldplay, I'd say. And then Tramps Like Us, which is the, I wouldn't even say arguably, I would just say the best Bruce Springsteen cover band. So if you just missed the big tour Bruce was on, or you just bought his book and you're halfway through it, and you want to come hear some live Bruce music, Tramps Like Us will be the headliner. Music starts at 3:00. Tramps Like Us will go on around 7:30, and will end around 9 o'clock. There's also the, a bunch of food trucks, so I think there's five food trucks, Joe?
No, I think we have six or seven vendors.
Six or seven vendors total. A whole wide array of food, so something for everyone. Should be good, should be a lot of fun, and of course, they'll eat beer, because it's a Rocktoberfest with rock in front of it. So if you're 21, there's beer and wine. Four different types of beer this year, Joe.
Four.
So come...
Two wines.
What's that?
Two wines.
Two wines.
White and red.
Yeah, red and white. And it starts at 3:00. Be there. That should be fun. We're just working on the good weather. The way out forecast is already better than it was yesterday, Joe. 10% chance of rain. A little cooler, only high of 63, but not that I'm watching. Next is the O'Hara Nature Center Wine and Cheese Fundraiser has been rescheduled for the spring, so we're going to wait for some beautiful spring flowers instead of the fall foliage. And lastly, the last one I have is there's a public hearing for traffic safety. We've been talking about it for a while. It's actually scheduled for next Thursday, which is October 13, which is our work session. Because of the Jewish holidays, it's not on Wednesday, it's actually on Thursday, the 13th. So if you like, want to come talk about traffic safety, or if you want to come listen about traffic safety, we're going to have the police chief here, we're going to have our traffic committee here, and of course, the five of us will be here. So that should be a good discussion. Anyone else have any announcements? Yeah, okay.
Actually, this is probably a good time to do it. I just wanted to mention that I attended on the last Saturday the dedication of the volunteer fire department trucks, and probably everything you need to know...
Inspection, isn't it?
Inspection, sorry. Probably everything you need to know is that we started late because there was a call, and one of the trucks was out, so we had to wait for it to come back. And it was just, everyone who spoke just emphasized that this is the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department, and not only are those folks there to respond to every call, every possible kind of danger to our community, but they also put a lot of time into training and keeping up their training. So many, several public officials were there, Mary Jane Chimskey, Andre Stewart-Cousins, Paul Feiner, and, you know, over and over again appreciation for the wonderful work of the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department. If you ever have a chance to walk in and go up the stairs, the pictures are amazing. Pictures from the 1890s, and some artifacts of, you know, different companies and different things that happened over the years. Quite something.
Yeah, thank you for going. First one I missed, I think, is 1998, so I appreciate you being there. It's always a great night, and I always say firefighters in general never look for the limelight, and this is the one out of the year we kind of celebrate them and thank them for all they do. They're probably the most taken-for-granted group.
Absolutely.
I'd say along with the ambulance corps as well, where you dial 911 or 8080, and you just know they're going to be there. And when you think it's all volunteer, it's kind of hard to believe, and it's actually now the only all-volunteer ambulance corps has a lot of paid help, so it's pretty amazing, from the chief down to, you know, the newest firefighter, so thank you for all you do. Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll move on to correspondence. We had one piece of correspondence from Ann Ashinson. I'll just quickly read the first page here. "The Emergents Trustees of Village Ministerator. This notice documents review the state of young trees found in Sinek Hudson Park. I'm not sure what the source of fund for the trees was, if we planted them, or how the trees were selected and sited, and that plaques on their base indicating that they memorial trees. Virtually every single young tree is now well on its way to failing, to thrive, several already possibly essentially dead, probably essentially dead. Gator bags replaced on some of the trees during the summer months. If you've not seen these, they are heavy-duty plastic rings or bags that sit around the base of the trunk, are filled with water and slowly released. That water be gravity-fed, osmotic pressure through two valves. In the heat of the summer this year, several of my clients had to fill gator bags in the new trees every other day, sometimes even every day if the tree was in blaring sun, in order to keep the leaves from wilting or scorching. As to the question how often the gator bags are filled in the summer in the park, the lack of leaves on the trees and/or scorched leaves that are left tell the whole story. The one in the shape of rings holds less water and are meant for trees with low branches like evergreens, where the more upright versions can't be attached properly. Right now, all the gator bags are empty. Reason I'm harping on the gator bags is because if they're not filled routinely, they're actually harmful. Plastic bag covers reach the entire root zone of the new tree, which means that when it does infect rain, none of the rain reaches the plant's roots." And then, and attached 14 pictures of different trees in Sinek Hudson. And then there's some, there's one other large hazard tree, I believe. I think that's the gist of it.
Yes, may I speak or not?
Uh, yeah, we're going on a public comment anyway, so if you wanted to add to that.
I just wanted to say two things about this. One is that I think the reason why my love of trees, which you all know is very deep, has spilled over into Sinek Hudson is because of the fact that so many of those trees are planted as memorials. And the whole idea of planting a memorial tree, which I've done for my own parents, is to create a living memorial that gets more beautiful and more stately over time to allow you to go and look at that living thing that takes, and think about the person that you loved who's now gone. And so to see a dead tree memorializing a dead person just kind of really hit me the wrong way. But I'd like to suggest it, since it was already such a long letter, I didn't write the second part of the letter, which is what to do about it. So I think that, I understand the impulse to plant memorial trees there, and, but I also think that we have to bear in mind that that park is built on landfill that's been capped with a rubber cap, and so the amount of soil is very limited in that space. And you all know that trees, especially big tall trees, need a lot of root room, especially when they're in blaring sun and big wind and whatnot, which is what's down there. They need to have a very big root zone to get enough water and oxygen to keep themselves alive. And there's a lot of trees planted there. And there may have, there might have been a plan in the beginning of where to plant what, and I think over time, some of those trees have died off, and there's a lot of very mature honey locusts, which seem to not mind it there. In fact, one of the few young trees that's doing well is a honey locust, so obviously there's something about that tree and that site that works. But we're getting close to having a monoculture of honey locusts down there, which is not a good thing. So I think that now that years have passed, it's time to maybe look at that park from the, so I guess the reason I said about the soil is you can't just keep inserting more and more trees. There's not enough root space. So if you put a new tree underneath a big old tree, the old tree is going to take all the nutrients, and the young tree is going to have to compete with that. So you don't want to create a situation where you put trees in competition with one another when you're in a park like that. It's one thing in a woodland or something like that. Or you could create layers on purpose, where you put shrubs underneath trees or something like that. But I think it's time to revisit the landscaping of that park. There's a lot, there's, if you look along the fence line between the senior center and the parking lot of Bridge Street, you'll see there's quite, there's at least two trees that are basically dead, if not on their way there. And they, those I think were hornbeams that were meant to be planted as sentinels or something like that, but that's not working anymore because some of them are gone. So I think it's time to look at that thing and decide, are there ways that we could improve the landscape without, and give ourselves maybe some more space to plant, if not memorial trees, maybe a memorial garden or grove that would include big trees, small trees, and shrubs and grasses and something. And I think the way to do that would be to create berms in places where it wouldn't block the view, so that you get more soil space, more root space for the plants, and then you can plant stuff without putting it in competition. And one place to do that might be along that very fence line, because you're not really blocking any views there. You'd be creating a buffer between the park and the parking lot, and, you know, it's big, long space, so. And then there's other places, like maybe behind the fields, I think there's very thriving evergreens planted on the riverside of that field, but then there's a bunch of empty spaces in that same planting bed where things have not made it. So maybe we could, you know, enhance that or something. But I think that whatever happens, there has to be a purposeful, it has to be purposeful, I'm not trying to insult anybody here, but it, the trees need, it needs to be decided what trees are going to be planted and where, and it has to be purposeful. I don't think the park can be one where there's a tree every 10 feet. There's just not enough soil in that park for that.
I may, just because, if you just look at the pictures there, these pictures were taken at 5:00 o'clock tonight, just to give you an idea of the trees are not all screaming and yelling at us. I guess first, I do, I am a little disappointed that Ann would not have reached out to us first and had a discussion with us, as we have said multiple times, we need residents to help us when they see things, because we don't have the manpower to take care of everything. When the, when you saw the pictures of the, of the tree bags, it's when we lost our summer help, and we could not keep up with it. And it was during one of the worst periods of the summer, where, you know, we're in a drought. We had a master arborist with us in the park today, taking a look at some of the stuff. He takes care of billion-dollar properties where, you know, there are trees in distress. Chris DiPaoli is an arborist. One common thing with Sinek Hudson is Chris and I have both been charged with taking care of it since the first day it opened. And there are many trees down there that are doing well. We learn a lot, okay? We've learned over the years that river birch and dogwood don't do well there, and we're moving away from red maples. There are things that do do well, and we try to, we change, okay? We move things around. When you have a family, as Ann mentioned, has a dedicated rock, that means so much to them. You know, we meet with them, we're the ones who sit with them and pick out the spot, and they pick a spot out for a specific reason. And if the tree doesn't work, we work with them to find a tree that will work, okay? I mean, I, again, I don't know of too many people who've sponsored a tree down there that have reached out or made a complaint that we haven't been respondent or taken care of the thing they've said. In Ann's pictures, there are some young trees you see. I think what's important to note is three of the four that are, there are four new young trees down there. Those trees came from the DPW project that was done this summer. They were trees that were supposed to be for residents, and the residents declined to accept them.
In front of residents' houses, not in the right place.
Right. So they didn't want them, so DPW was trying to find a place to put them. Because we've had a few trees that we had lost, we agreed to put them into Sinek Hudson. And those are some of the trees that look, that look like they're not doing well. The trees in Sinek Hudson lose their leaves earlier than the trees will in Matheson. You can go to Matheson Park right now, and we can show you the same identical tree that was planted in Matheson, and then the same one that was planted at Sinek, and the one in Matheson is thriving, and the one at Sinek is dealing with it in its own way. There are a few trees that need to go, but they are not all dying. They need to be addressed. Listen, it could be fixed easy. Give me two more parks employees, and I promise you I'll water them every day. So we can't create a lot more maintenance down there. The tree that was mentioned that has the crack in it, that tree has wound wood that's developing and trying to save it. And we don't just give up on trees. We have three at the nature center that four years ago we were told to take down because they were going to die. They're all thriving. They're all thriving right now, because they got some attention and they got cared for. Before we give up on the tree with the crack in it, we're going to do a resistograph test on it, to see how deep the dead part of the tree is. If it requires to come down, it will. If we think it can be saved, then we're going to keep it up, and we're going to care for it, and we hope it's gonna, going to exist. So, we'd be more than happy to sit with Ann. We know she's a professional. But, you know, there is a lot of thought that goes into that park. Chris spends many hours trying to figure out what to do, what to put in. We have a plan down there that has made the trees healthier with, with the Bartlett tree that we've done for the past couple of years. So, you know, we'll stand behind what we do down there, but as always, we're, we're more than happy to, to meet, to discuss. So, again, in this situation, the first step we thought should have been, come sit with us and try to work out a plan, and then bring the plan to you. Coming to you without even including us was just something we felt that was disrespectful towards us. Thank you.
So, I have two quick comments, if I could. I know we don't usually comment, but I have to say that I was, no, from sitting through the tree commission meetings, they were all very concerned about this, the condition on delivery. A lot of those trees that came in for the DPW street planting, residents' front yard planting, whatever you want to call it. And there was some concern, and I don't know if the tree commission reached out to Larry or not yet, but the concern was they thought that they really needed to have an inspection on and approval on delivery, rather than just, the trees were coming in that were basically almost leafless, you know, in the, at the time, in the late spring or early summer planting, whenever it was, early summer, I guess. And so, when you get trees in that condition from the nursery, there's an issue about the quality of the tree. So, you know, God bless you for taking the leftover trees into the park, but I think you might have been also dealing with problematic plant material to begin with. The only other thing I wanted to say about that one tree is, this, was it a sycamore that had the crack? I'd really urge you to get that resistograph test done very quickly, because that tree does look like it could be, you know, critical safety issue for anyone in that area if there was a problem with it, so.
It'll be done within a week.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
Great.
Well, I guess the only thing is, we need to talk then, probably, sorry, for your budget for summertime help. We've got to make sure that you can get the help you need to keep everything, all the bags filled. You know, maybe you guys could think about it and come to us.
Brenda.
No, you know, it's.
No, listen, it's, unfortunately, a lot of the stuff we have is high maintenance. The problem with the gardens at the nature center is they are very difficult to maintain. They were designed by experts, but they were, weren't designed to be taken care of with the two-man parks department. Okay? We need specialists to help us with things like that. So, we try, we have to simplify things. And yes, the bags were left there, and they looked bad, and, you know, if we had gotten a phone call, we would have gone out and filled them. We might not have filled them every day, but we would have, we would have, we would have dealt with them. We since removed all the bags, just so you know, and Chris will be identifying which trees he thinks still needs them most, and we'll be putting them out there, although we don't have to go much longer with watering.
Now, in watering, are you, are we still borrowing Dobbs Ferry's water truck, or whatever it is, water va, water trailer? I guess that's what you call it. Or, how are you guys watering out there?
We, we, we use couplers that are down there, which is a great deal of work, because you have to keep hooking up. If you, if we really wanted to make sure everything out there was fine, we need to put an irrigation system in. Look at the ball field, and then look, just, just go stand and look at the field, and then go look near the court, and go look on the south side, and you can see what the water does.
You don't want to, like, you don't want to grass irrigate trees, you'd have to have a drip irrigation on the trees.
Exactly, exactly.
That's gonna be a little bit of expense, too.
Sure.
To go between planting holes. So, anyways, it would be nice to try to think through, maybe this is a place where some, little bit of conversation, shared conversation with Ann, and, and Chris could maybe come up with some ideas with, or whatever. You know your, you know, the labor involvement, but it would be great not to have to run up into the issue of watering in the summertime. Lack of ability to water in the summertime, sorry.
I'm looking to check here. This has been a very, very dry year.
I know.
We went from.
Chris, move to the.
No, no, let's say, yeah, we went from summer to tropics, back to drought, the desert, or high plains.
I know, it's been a very dry, it's been a very difficult year.
This is more like Washington DC weather than it is New York City weather. You know, it's like, when I say global warming, go ahead, but like, it's more like Washington DC, that temperate area.
Without the thunderstorms.
We could use them.
So, I have a quick comment. As a very regular user of both parks, as a walker, I put in a vote for as much shade to add to Sina Hudson as can be possible, which has changed a lot over the years that I've been walking that circle. But, and I'd also put in an observation that I think is amazing, how many people just in this room are caring about and wanting success with the trees in this village, in this park. I mean, I'm looking at Mark, I'm looking at Ann, I'm looking at Chris, and as professionals, and the rest of us who like it. But, so I would just encourage everybody who is knowledgeable on this to work together, and I appreciate Ann's volunteer effort, and I hope that everybody can kind of get together, share your good ideas, and we'll have to think about how we fund enough help to keep the trees growing. That's obviously an important thing, and I think our community supports that. I think that's something that if you ask the taxpayers, is it something worthwhile to make sure we put the care in to keep the trees in our public spots alive? I think the taxpayers would say yes. So, those are my comments about trees for the evening.
Great. Thanks. I mean, I, as you say, it's great walking around that park. I think it really has filled in over the last few years, and it looks, it looks great. And so, Joe, in February is when it turns over? Is it twenty years already?
Yes, in February, it'll be actually twenty years. I think Larry can give you a better detail than I can, but it will be twenty years.
Larry, yeah, Larry pointed it out. I thought we still had another three, four years.
Well, it's from the date we actually purchased the property, right?
That's correct, yeah, which I think that's what screwed me up.
He said it.
To that, I'm in denial about getting over here, but.
I'm gonna have some sort of, uh.
You'll see paperwork.
Right. I was a teenager then, and twenty years later.
Good. Any other public comment? Okay. Consent agenda? Just a minute to spend. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
You got, you got three out of that one, that's all right.
I should have.
Next, I will make a motion to open a public hearing, consider a local law establishing a school zone on Dowslane. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Larry, you want to go over this?
It's pretty straightforward. Yeah, we were looking to establish a school zone to allow for the speed limit to be set at less than 25 miles an hour, and really, the only, the only way that was compliant with the New York State law was, and the only one that we could identify, was Dowslane, because the school itself actually has to front on the public highway, I guess is the words they use, where the speed limit is being lowered. So, Station Road technically can't be designated that based upon where it sits, so. But we're, we're doing Dowslane as we can.
Just a side about Dowslane. Is, there was discussion brought up about the idea also of the issue with trying to limit parking on both sides during the busy time? Is that going anywhere?
That didn't come in front of me.
Okay.
So, I guess the answer's no.
Did anyone, anyone on the board have comments, or you open up?
Well, I mean, it's all part of, I think, our concerted effort to slow traffic down by whatever means we can, and this is a tool we have, and why not use it?
Yeah, I think one of the most surprising things we found is we couldn't lower the speed limit below 25. It was.
Yeah, you can't just do that.
Yeah, you can make it 15 anywhere you want it, but that's not the case. So, this seems like kind of a no-brainer, and it's actually a little bit surprising that it probably wasn't already designated.
And so, the, the actual length of it is right from Broadway, Dowslane from Broadway, right down to the parking lot of the school. Okay?
Excellent idea.
And now, there's a sidewalk there.
So, we, I guess we will need some enforcement, but how do we announce this more clearly to people?
We're gonna work with the school on doing something jointly, so everyone's aware of it.
Yeah. And there'll be, but there'll also be speed limit signs as you're entering, trying it off Broadway and stuff, yeah.
But as far as publicizing it, we're gonna work with the school on that.
So, what was the previous speed limit before the new speed limit?
It's 25.
Previously? And now, it's going to be?
15.
15.
Assuming I pass this.
Any public comments?
I was just gonna say, do we have any data about actual speed issues on Dowslane?
No, we have not done any speed studies on that, on that road. I think it's a psychological effect that we're after.
So, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll now take a vote. Did it pass this? Resolved to adopt a local law, mending chapter 213 of the Urban Code, vehicle and traffic, establish a 15 mile per hour school zone on Dowslane. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Next is approval of the 2016-17 snow and ice agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation. Already that time, Larry?
Yeah, I know, sorry to do that to you. But, yeah, this is just a routine extension of the arrangement that we have New York, with New York State to plow Broadway, essentially. This provides for the reimbursement of it.
This is kind of the, sort of the basic amount that they usually, well, it's a bad winter, it gets readjusted.
That's right, there's, yeah.
And compared to last year, it's about the same.
Yeah, I mean, our road, the mileage.
The mileage is the same, yeah.
Yeah, so, and this'll get adjusted. It's a basic amount, it'll get adjusted depending on how many times the DOT crews go out to maintain their roads. That's what they base it on. So, the number, the number of events, essentially.
Is it plowing and salt, or just plowing?
Um, I don't know.
I can't remember.
I don't remember the exact quantity, but it's, it's probably whatever we decide to do, but I think.
Just to keep it open, I know, yeah. Well, I have to just say in passing, once again, before we hit the season, that I am always amazed. I can tell there is like a dividing line between this village and Tarrytown and Dobbs Ferry, sorry, in terms of the quality of Broadway cleaning. So, we do, whatever the DPW is doing, does an excellent job.
Yeah, and New York State's getting as long as it wants.
Yeah, right.
I agree. I can, if you were blindfolded, you could tell when you had early time, because you can hear, you can feel the pavement.
Except you're not supposed to drive blindfolded.
It's fun.
The autopilot isn't that safe yet.
It's fun sometimes, I'll try.
It's a great part of the traffic.
Yeah, ever since the, you have the slowdown in River Town, so I've had to have been blindfolded.
The mayor's driving with a blindfold.
It's almost easier with vision. So, I guess if there's no further questions, since we're just renewing this, we'll move forward. Whereas the Village of Burlington and the New York State Department of Transportation wish to enter into an agreement providing to the villages removal of snow and ice from north and south Broadway, now therefore, be it resolved to approve the 2016-17 snow and ice agreement between the Village of Burlington and the New York State Department of Transportation, and authorize the Superintendent of Public Works to execute said agreement. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have two, oh, actually, I'm sorry, we have this, the other scheduled one for us, which is a promotion of a water department employee. Does any background on this, Larry, or just?
No, I think over the summer, I don't remember the exact date, the existing employee, no, no, the existing employee.
Resigned.
In the department resigned. So, went on to pursue other, other things. So, there's a vacancy, and the employee in the next lowest position had taken the test, passed it, and was, is an acceptable candidate. So, we're recommending him for promotion.
And he's been an employee for a long time, so.
Yes, exactly.
January was the effective date?
I'm sorry, it's the next day, right. It should be tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and it's water and sewer maintenance.
Yes, thank you.
Water and sewer.
So, will the, is this a matter of attrition, or will they be rehiring for that, for the empty slot that's in, the lower slot?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be rehiring. So, that, we have to do it step by step, and we're asking for another list for the, for the lower portion now.
Okay, thanks.
Result to appoint Kenneth Master Pietro to position of water and sewer maintenance worker grade one. Annual salary is $71,372, effective October 7th, 2016. Show that to completion of operation over a period of not less than 12 weeks and not more than 52 weeks. Make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, there's two bonus items. It's like extra innings in baseball. First is appointment of part-time positions for a recreation department. It's like special instructors for sporting programs. Result to make the following part-time appointments, James Horan, volleyball, soccer instructor, $22 an hour from 10-1, 2016, through 4-1, 2017, and Brian Bernarducci for the wrestling instructor, $20 an hour from October 1st, 2016, to April 1st, 2017. Before I make the motion, anyone have any questions?
And as always, it's in budget, right?
Yeah.
Fees pay. If it doesn't reach its minimum, that a program doesn't go.
Right, okay, gotcha, thank you.
Wrestling.
So, I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the other one is a film permit, which is hot off the press, Emily.
Yeah, that's right. This is even more of a last-minute item, but we'll try to walk, talk our way through it. We were approached about a request for a filming permit. It is on, at the site of Red Hat Restaurant, so it's on private property. The request is for October 13th. It's a, it's a commercial shoot, from my understanding. October 13th with an alternate date of October 14th. There are details that still need to be worked out about this, but you don't have another meeting before then. So, what, what I would ask is that, and I don't see any preliminary issues with this. We do need to make sure that the landlord is in sync with the tenant in this case, but those are the types of things we'll be looking at. But traffic and parking and things like that don't appear to be an issue based upon where it is, so.
And no gunfire?
No.
Where is it again, Larry?
I'm sorry?
Where is it?
It's at the Red Hat. Yeah, so, there's, there's plenty of room, and it's not impacting anything that's really public property to speak of, so. But, we still have to work out some details. So, what I'm asking for you to do is to approve this permit for O positive films, which is the name of the applicant. Permit fee is $1,000, as, as accordance with our fee schedule, and it would be subject to, you know, the final approval and details being worked out by me.
So, move. Can I have a second?
Thank you.
Any questions before we vote?
Nope.
All in favor?
Thank you.
So, speaking of film permits, I just wanted to bring up a question. You know, women on, women on a train, was that?
Girl on a train.
You're so politically correct.
Isn't it opening tomorrow?
Yes.
Now, I have two questions. One, one, that was the second one. The first one is.
She didn't do it.
Are we concerned at all about, you know, what do you call it?
People visiting?
Yes, people visiting, right. You know, like.
The tunnel being closed because of a swarm of people.
Well, whatever, you know, people stopping to take pic, whatever, you never know what kind of silliness. So, I guess, you know, I guess the question would be just to ask the, maybe ask the chief just to be aware that there could be some silliness with extraterrism.
Sure. We should be so lucky.
Well, you know, once, over the weekend, you'll see. I bet you'll end up with people like stopping to take pictures in the tunnel, just 'cause.
It'd look great.
You know, selfies kind of thing, like with the tunnel behind. The second question wasn't, do we get free tickets, but can we organize an outing of the trustees to go see the movie?
Other than that, yeah. On the, on the bigger picture, we actually were in contact with them starting in early August, because they told me to contact them in August to see about getting it filming here. And they actually, I think, seriously considered having the New York premiere in, at the Town Hall Theater, but they just couldn't work out the logistics. So, then they actually offered us a private screening.
That'd be nice, yeah.
Which I thought was great. And we said, great, we'll do it as a fundraiser for the theater. And they said, no, you can't do it as a fundraiser. In fact, we even controlled how many people would go and all that kind of. In fact, we even controlled how many people would go and all that kind of stuff. So, it felt a little too, it felt odd, I think, too, a little too private to, you know, have it for, you know, our family and friends and board members. So, I thanked them very much. I told them we'd be happy to work with them down the road, even if it's, you know, considerably down the road, six months, if they could help us organize having, you know, cast or crew members come and kind of do a talk back at the end or something, or talk about why the, you know, the setting was moved from the book, which was London to Westchester, and how they found Irvington and all the tips they had to be... So, I think the, the short-term answer is, it kind of struck out, but I think longer term, we still could have a cool event that will, you know, kind of, when the excitement's starting to die now, maybe we can rekindle some of that excitement and extend it into the cold winter months, so...
Just in time for the second movie, right?
Exactly.
Well, I know the theater commission had come, the film group had come, I think, Beth Ryan, and, long ago, and said that they would very much support some kind of involvement with that film and a talk back as you're discussing, so...
Yep.
I, I think if, you know, any communication you get, Brian, if you, you know, at least get to Greg...
Yeah, we did, we actually cleared a date, which would have been last night with Greg. And Greg, Greg was in contact with him, but then it just kind of didn't work. Would have been the five of us and Greg, maybe, so it just felt weird.
And a red carpet.
Yeah, exactly. And they actually were talking about getting some cast and crew, and I was like, it sounds even worse now, but, yeah.
I think the director, why they pick, places they pick, how they, you know, things that happen in filming, and that kind of personal story would be great, and along with Justin Farrow and Emily Prentice.
Obviously.
I feel like stopping by, that would be fun.
I think that's it for our agenda. So, reports of board, standing committees and officers, trustee liaison reports, trustee Gillett.
Well, just, of course, I want to reiterate, the traffic committee is looking forward to the work session on October 13, and Walter will be the chair. Walter MacDermott will be presenting some status updates, I guess you'd say, about what's been accomplished and some of the future goals, perhaps. He's going to keep it short. We're going to also hear from probably Larry and the chief, I think, and then it's really going to be open to the public to come and talk about their concerns and talk about, you know, whatever in the, in the range of issues in traffic and pedestrian safety. So, it's going to be a good way to gather additional input from people and bring everyone up to the speed of what has been done so far.
Excellent. Our girl on the train?
So, yeah, Rec and Parks Committee. Love it. Our pack is meeting on Wednesday, the 19th, at 7:30 in the Rec Center. Special thank you to everyone who participated in the rededication of the Bob Spiesum Basketball Court in Santa Cutsin Park on the 24th. It was a great event. The community advisory board is having their October meeting next Tuesday, the 11th, at 8:00 a.m. in the senior center. The mayor mentioned Rocktoberfest. That sounds awesome. The Irvington He-Ride is scheduled for Saturday, October 22nd, 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. in Matheson Park. Music, refreshments, sponsored by Face Committee, and Maureen DePauli has information about that. The Halloween Parade, sponsored by the Irvington Fire Company and the Rec and Parks Department, is on Sunday, October 30th, begins at 3:00 p.m. at Immaculate Conception in the parking lot, and it ends in the parking lot of Main Street School. Kittybacks for all the kids, provided by the Irvington Fire Company.
Yeah, don't miss that. That's always a...
That's insane.
It's fun.
Right.
It's fun.
Because no one dresses scary clowns. Please.
Definitely. And the Woods Committee and the Rec and Parks Committee, Advisory Committee, both want to remind residents that dogs must be on a leash at all times when they're on the Irvington Trails. And registration for open gym for fourth and fifth grade students is now open. Angela Thornton has information on that. That's it.
Yeah, well, the Historic District Committee is going to be back here to our board next week. That's our meeting on the 13th, after the traffic group has their discussion. They will be bringing back the, the guide document that we looked at a month ago or so, and we needed some tweaks on it, and Mary Ann's comments that she had forwarded are incorporated now. And so, what we think we'll have is a final document that, and some members of the committee will be here that night to discuss it with us for whatever other discussion that we need in terms of that document.
You know, this Janice, remember, I had said that there needed to be a law, I mean, you needed to correct law, and I had drafted a change that I sent right after that meeting, and I never heard. I mean, I didn't circulate it to the whole board because it didn't make sense until the Historic Committee thought that it makes, and I never heard.
I haven't met with them. I've, you know, had some communications since then, and I, I do recall that you did that, I think, well, let's, let's talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I really, it was kind of important to this discussion. I mean, it's finally got these guidelines, but how do they fit into it? And, you know, what I'll do is, I'll, I'll re, maybe I'll resend it. I, I think it was maybe the heat on John, I don't remember, but I'll resend it because I think they ought to have been thought out a little bit by them before, by them, to see whether their proposal made sense to them, and then the board can discuss it.
So, there's the, the document itself...
Right.
And, you know, the pictures and all that, which, no matter what, that will, would exist.
Yes.
And then it's the question of how we're going to integrate it into our land use issue.
Yeah, into the process. You've got these guidelines, but how do they, how enforceable are they, or whatever, how do they, how do they fit in?
So, so, I, yeah, the, what they have, what they are, what they know they can present is...
Do you know if they're meeting before they come to the board? Are they meeting again before they come to the board?
I have, I haven't seen that. They, you know, they've been back and forth with Tilly's office to fix up the pages that were wrong.
This one that had to do with Steve Tilly.
Yeah, this is, so what they are prepared to do, but yes, I think communication beforehand would be important for that issue. They, what they're prepared to do is show you this booklet in its final form.
Okay.
The other committee, the Housing Committee, met last night, and will meet again next week, and we're working, actually, Janice is helping us, thankfully, to work on a very important public forum that's being planned for November. I won't go into any further details about that yet, but it's going to be an important informational, public session that the committee will be sponsoring and organizing. I think that's it. The theater, oh, yes, the theater, I haven't had another commission meeting, but I think, I think you all know that there was an incredible event here that Common Ground Carter Smith organized to support Parkinson's research through the Michael J. Fox, and they had a, a full house of performers that did Linda Ronstadt music. It was a very special evening. Carter did an incredible job organizing bands, and obviously, all volunteering their time and efforts, so that fundraising made $11,000 for Michael J. Fox. And if you see Carter, thank him, because he did, he himself described his own, he has Parkinson's himself, and he's very much involved now with the effort to do research on that. So, anyway, that was the theater.
Yes, I'm glad you remembered that. I was supposed to remind you, but you did. Justice Silverberg.
Highway Department, continuing Hudson View Park curb replacement and drainage, painting guide rails on the bottom of Main Street, Station Road and Circle Drive. Very important, preparing for Hurricane Matthew. Assisted the Parks Department delivery of material and removal of stumps, trimming around traffic signs, and here is interesting, continuing to water newly planted trees and replacement grass at the Hudson View Park Drainage and Curb Replacement Project through shared services by using Dobbs Ferry's watering truck. I don't know if that truck can drive over to Santa Cutsin, but, you know, just perhaps something to explore. Filling potholes, installing new signs on crosswalks, cleaning catch basins. And the water department is reading water meters, and obviously, high on the agenda is full maintenance of all water department properties, full, and completed, full hydrant flushing was completed. Catch basins in Artsley Train Station were edited and cleaned, storks fittings on all fire hydrants with the IFT, and the water main cap at 166 Main Street.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Next, for my order, is the village administrator's report, even though you should go over there. Let me follow the letter of the law here, Larry.
Okay. So, a few of us have been working furiously to put together a grant application under the Transportation Alternatives Program, and the, the target of that grant is the potential for construction of sidewalks on Riverview Road, the, a portion of Station Road that doesn't have sidewalks, and also reconfiguring the crosswalks at Main Street and Broadway. So, I have a pre-application meeting up in Acipsey on Tuesday to review that, and then the application is due on the 21st of October. So, everyone's working at a fever pace to try to get that done. The other thing is that we recently were visited by officials from the DEC who inspected our dam at the, at Halsey Pond. They, it hadn't been on their inventory, it's now on their inventory, and they came out to classify it as to what type of a hazard it is, what type of a dam, and depending on the hazard classification will dictate the type of maintenance and emergency response you have to have, and a whole series of requirements. And they did preliminarily classify it as a Class C, which is considered a high-hazard dam, which is the same exact classification as the Irvington Reservoir, which frankly is surprising to me. But we'll, we haven't received written notification of that, but this could trigger some, some expenses. We don't know how much yet and what annual responsibilities we'll have as well. We'll see.
They rate the dam and the reservoir separately?
Yes, and they rated them the same, as it, as it relates to how much potential loss of life and property there could be downstream if it were to fail. They're, they're both rated the same, which is surprising. But now the onus is on us. We're probably going to have to do an engineering study to determine what the impact would be if it were to fail, and if it is of a lower impact than they think, then maybe it can be reconsidered. If it's, if it's what they think, then that's what it is. So, more on that to come, but I just wanted to give you a heads up.
And there, just, there's specified remediation that would be required, or...
Yeah, oh, yeah. And it's going to need some work. We already know it needs some work, so it's, we'll see.
The village clerk treasures report.
Nothing today.
Village attorney's report. Public comment?
I would like to ask a question.
Sure. All right.
I actually wanted to ask a question about the Historic District Guidelines document. I was here for that meeting where it was presented, and I guess what I'd like to know is, let's say, they present to you what they consider the final version of it. What is, what does the, when does the public, or does the public ever get to say anything, or have we already missed our chance?
I would assume when they come next week at 8 o'clock, I mean, that it's done and it's a document. Are you thinking about how it would be used, or what's actually in it?
Well, I, I have, have had some back and forth with them about the landscaping part, which I recognize that they put as an appendix, and I don't even know, you know, how important that is, but there's kind of a basic philosophical disagreement as, as far as historical landscaping versus modern landscaping. And I think the woman who wrote it, which, whose name I'm blocking right now...
Yeah, it's Steve Tilly's wife.
But she has her own name, Elizabeth Somer. She is very, she's very strongly in favor of quote-unquote, having the landscaping in your historic district look historic, and she cites a book that I've, that I've read, and I've cited back a few other books that say the opposite, and it, and I'm, I guess I'm just concerned because I feel like that landscaping part is in, stands in contrast with what the architects are saying, which is, as you know, don't try to make it look old. Use the vernacular of the time when you do additions or build new houses, but, and then you have these guidelines. So, anyway, I just was wondering when, if there's ever going to be a chance for the public to give input to the document versus to how it will be used, which I assume the public will have input into. Or is that just between the public and a committee?
I don't think it can be, I don't think it can be on October 13th, because the document itself isn't available until very shortly before that, so...
Right, exactly, yeah.
And if, if it's going to happen, which I'm assuming they're going to want it to happen, and it would be at a date beyond that...
There'll be, there'll probably be a public hearing date or something like that. I mean, this isn't that formal, but we get pulled up, we take comments on it.
Yeah, they don't have the final documents, so it's...
Yeah, it is, it is, it's also guidelines, so they, I mean, they're changeable, it's not...
Right, the other, what I was going to say is that it's, it's meant to be an online document that is, we know it's going to change, so it's not going to be a static thing forever, so...
Yeah, it's not even like it is kind of difficult to change as, as a local law. We have to have public hearings and then submit it. It's going to be, if we purposely want to have it as an online document, so it can be edited and updated as, you know, as things change.
I mean, I think Anne makes a good point that we, you know, we should make sure that the landscaping is seen as, you know, this is one, you know, I don't even want to say recommended, but this is one potential approach to dealing with, you know, dealing with landscaping. I have to tell you that, you know, I got into the same, sort of the same issue when I did the original design for the Historical Society House, McVicker House, and what I found that was fascinating was that, you know, I did limit the plant palette to plant species that were actually available in the 1800s. I did my research at the Botanical Gardens and, and looked at old catalogs where you could buy apple trees for 10 cents, and that kind of thing. And what, what I did find out as well is, of course, in the, for the most part, in those days, there were, a lot of this stuff was available, but was not available in cultivars. There were just basically straight species, you know, they hadn't really been manipulated by the growing, the growers. And nowadays, it's much harder to get straight species, and, and in fact, you, people buy cultivars for specific reasons, for either aesthetics, or fruit production, or hardiness, or any number of things. So, to, you would want to make sure that anything that dealt with a landscaping recommendation was loose enough to say, you know, it's not that you have to be narrowed down to a particular style and a particular set of species, of generic species rather than cultivars, because that would be an undue burden, I think, on most people.
And does it even need to be in there? Because, you know, say about landscaping and single-family house, you know...
Yeah, I think too, historically, people like to get foreign things, so you talk about invasive species, is like, you know, there was a big...
Oh, yeah, a huge collection. I mean, all that stuff in the 1800s was big collectors going all over the place.
White maples were a big thing. Remember, I showed you that book?
So, it was, it should just be clear that it's seen as, like, you know, for those who are interested in this, it's, here's some background information for the historical period, but I don't think it can be as much stronger than that.
You agree with Ashen Adams? I didn't have anything. Ashen Adams?
Just, no, I don't think so.
I just, e-blast for, I know, Larry, we talked about an e-blast for the October 13th, yeah.
I can make a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding consultant contract. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.